Hello, I'm going to open the hearing now. Let the record show that the time is 6:05 and the public hearing is now officially open. Note that we will be recording this hearing. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Discharge of Surface Water Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, the City of Camden, and Gloucester City, who often use the acronym NIGPTES in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick. I'm the hearing officer and I'm a section chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting within the Division of Water Quality at the Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Many Bureau staff have been involved in preparing the permits that are subject of this hearing and are also preparing for the hearing itself. Kirsten Victorella will be providing instructions on how to provide testimony today. Molly Jacoby is the case manager for all three permits. Bennett Moss will provide an overview of the subject permits. Iris Hernandez, who works for the Bureau of Construction Payments and Administration within the Division of Water Quality, will be providing a Spanish translation. Also here today are many NJDEP staff, including Susan Rosenwinkle, Assistant Director of the Division of Water Quality, and others who are part of the CSO program or part of other NJDEP programs. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which will take about four minutes. Iris Hernandez will then present this information in Spanish. We will then provide an overview of Microsoft Teams and a short summary of the permits in English and then in Spanish. This introductory information should take about 20 minutes in total. As established in the NIGPTES regulations of the NJAC, excuse me, of the New Jersey Administrative Code at 7:14A/15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the department is here to listen and take testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that verbal and written statements have the equal weight, so if someone is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, they can submit it electronically, where it will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, and a response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final NIGPTES permit decisions. The permatees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Note that the public comment period will end today, January 22, 2024, at 11:59 PM. If you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and I will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we request that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. In view of time limitations, I am asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may only testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or at 8:00 PM, whichever occurs first. The same information I just read now, just read, will now be read in Spanish by Iris Hernandez. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Kirsten Victorella, who will provide an overview in Microsoft Teams. After that, Bennett Moss will give some factual information regarding the NIGPTES permits. Iris?
Hola. Abriré la audiencia en este momento. Deje que el registro muestre que la hora es 6:05 PM y la audiencia pública ya está oficialmente abierta. Tenga en cuenta que grabaremos esta audiencia. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo para la renovación de los permisos de descarga a aguas de superficie, desbordamiento del alcantarillado combinado del sistema de eliminación de descargas de contaminantes de Nueva Jersey, NGPDS, para la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden, Ciudad de Camden, y Ciudad de Gloucester. A menudo usamos el acrónimo NGPDS cuando nos referimos al programa del sistema de eliminación de descarga de contaminantes de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es Joe Manick. Soy el oficial de la Audiencia Pública y el jefe de sección de la Oficina de Permisos de Agua de Superficie y preta tratamiento de la División de Calidad de Agua en el Departamento de Protección Ambiental, también denominado del Departamento ONGDEP. Muchos empleados de la oficina han sido involucrados en preparar estos permisos que son el tema de esta audiencia y también en preparar esta audiencia. Kristin Victorella brindará instrucciones sobre cómo dar testimonio hoy. Molly Jacoby es la administradora de casos para los tres permisos. Bennett Moss brindará una visión general de los permisos en cuestión. Iris Hernandez, que quien trabaja para la Oficina de Construcción, Pagos y Administración dentro de la División de Calidad de Agua, proveerá una traducción en español. También hay aquí hoy muchos empleados del NGDEP, incluyendo a Susan Rose Winkle, sugerente de la División de Calidad del Agua, y otras personas que son parte del programa CSO o de otros programas en el NGDEP. Ahora proporcionaremos información general sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública, lo que tomará unos cuatro minutos. Iris Hernandez presentará esta información en español. A continuación proporcionaremos una descripción general de Microsoft Teams y un resumen breve de los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información introductoria tomará unos 20 minutos en total. Como se establecen las regulaciones del NGPDS, el Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey, en 7:14A/15, esta es una audiencia pública no contestiosa, la cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonio como parte de nuestro proceso regulatorio. El propósito de esta audiencia es proporcionar el público interesado, incluidas las comunidades afectadas, la oportunidad de ser escuchados con respeto a esta actividad de los borradores de permisos propuestos. El departamento aceptará declaraciones verbales y por escrito el día de hoy. Tenga en cuenta que las declaraciones por escrito y las verbales tendrán la misma importancia. Así que si alguien no se siente cómodo de hablar y solamente tiene una declaración escrita preparada, puede enviarla electrónicamente y se dará la misma importancia que el testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para comentarios por escrito es dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov. Ahora añadiremos el correo al chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es recibir su comentario y preocupaciones. El departamento responderá a todos los comentarios significados y relevantes, o tantos verbales como por escrito, en un documento de respuesta a comentario que se publicará como parte de las decisiones finales sobre permisos de NGPDS. Los permisiones... My apologies, I lost track of it. I'm sorry. Okay. Los permisiones... My apologies, I lost track of... Y toda la persona que hayan presentado comentarios recibirá una copia electrónica del documento con la determinación final siempre que nos hayan indicado su correo electrónico. También entregaremos copias a quien los solicite, aunque no haya enviado comentario. Asegúrese de dejar su correo electrónico en el chat o de enviarlo a dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov si quieren recibir una copia. Tenga en cuenta que el periodo de comentario público finalizará hoy, enero 22, 2024, a las 11:59 PM. Si desean presentar comentario público de manera de verbal hoy, escriban su nombre, organización, y correo electrónico en el chat, y los llevaremos y los llamaremos por su nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llames digan y del entre su nombre y apellido con claridad para el registro. Tendremos un taquigrafo judicial asignado para transcribir el testimonio grabado. Si alguien hablara en representación de la organización, les pedimos que identifique la organización. Queremos escuchar a todo y darle la oportunidad de hablar aquí. Debido al tiempo límito, les pedimos, les pido que su testimonio no sea, no exceda los cinco minutos. Cada uno solamente podrá hablar una vez hasta que escuchemos todas las personas que están aquí y desean dar testimonio. En caso de que el tiempo lo permita y sea posible hacer la final de la audiencia, si una persona desea declarar por segunda vez, haremos todo el posible para permitírselo. Pedimos que todos los que hablen y los miembros de la audiencia respeten el derecho de cada persona presente a ser escuchada y que eviten la conducta que pudieran interferir con su presentencia del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluye los testimonios a las 8:00 PM, lo que ocurre primero, o lo que ocurre primero. Esta misma información que acabo de leer será leída en español por Iris Hernandez. Después, desde, le daremos la palabra a Kristin Victorella, quien presentará una descripción general de Microsoft Teams. A continuación, Bennett Moss para dará información factual sobre los permisos de NGPDS.
Kristin? Can you see the PowerPoint? There we go, okay. Hi, my name is Kirsten Victorella, and I will be speaking to you about commenting during the public hearing. In order to inform the NJDEP hearing officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony, move your cursor around to open the Teams meeting toolbar, which will appear near the bottom center of your screen. Click on the chat icon to open the meeting chat box on the side of the screen. Type your name, organization, and email address in the "Type a new message" field at the bottom of the meeting chat box. When entering this information, use the following format: first name, last name, organization, and email address. See below for an example. Click the Send icon or press Enter on your keyboard to submit your message and notify the NJDEP hearing officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony. To unmute or mute your microphone, toggle your microphone icon. To disable or enable your camera, toggle your camera icon. If you're using a phone, you can hit star six to mute and unmute. This same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Iris Hernandez. After that, Bennett Moss will provide an overview of permits that were issued.
Hola, mi nombre es Kristin Victorella, y les estaré hablando sobre cómo comentar durante la audiencia pública. Para informar al oficio de la Audiencia Pública del NGDEP sobre sus interés en dar testimonio verbal, mueva su curso para que aparezca la barra de herramientas de reuniones de Teams en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Haga clic con el icono de chat para abrir el meeting chat a un lado de su pantalla. Escriba su nombre completo y el nombre de la organización que represente y su correo electrónico en el campo que dice "Type a message." Escriba un mensaje nuevo en la parte inferior del meeting chat. Cuando escriba esa información, use formato nombre más apellido más organización más correo electrónico. Vea el ejemplo abajo. Haga clic en el icono o presione la tecla Enter en su teclado para enviar su mensaje y notificar el oficial de la audiencia pública sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal. Para activar o silenciar el micrófono, activa el icono del micrófono. Para desactivar o activar la cámara, activa el icono de la cámara. Si se ha conectado por teléfono, para activar y silenciar su micrófono, por favor oprima el asterisco seis. Esta misma información se acaba de leer, será leída ahora en español por Iris Hernandez. Después, Bennett Moss presentará un resumen de los permisos que se emitieron.
Hello, my name is Bennett Moss of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing, the renewal of the NIGPTES permits for the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, permit number NJ0026182, the City of Camden, permit number NJ0108812, and the Gloucester City, permit number NJ0108847, where the draft permits were issued on November 9, 2023. All permits are posted on the NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. The common period will end at 11:59 PM on January 22, 2024, in accordance with NJAC 7:14A-1510 and 1514. The individual NIGPTES CSO permits for the combined sewer systems of the City of Camden and Gloucester City are hydraulically connected to the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, abbreviated to CCMUAA, Delaware Number One Water Pollution Control Facility. Combined Sewer Overflows, or CSOs, are discharges from combined sewer systems. Combined sewer systems are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and snowmelt runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. Combined sewer systems are still present in certain older cities in the state. CCMUAA owns and operates the wastewater treatment facility named the Delaware Number One Water Pollution Control Facility. The facility treats wastewater collected in a 226-square-mile servicing area in New Jersey, which includes the City of Camden and Gloucester City as customer communities. CCMUAA also owns and operates one CSO outfall located in the City of Camden. CCMUAA, the City of Camden, and Gloucester City on separate portions of one hydraulically-connected combined sewer system. The City of Camden and Gloucester City do not own or operate any wastewater treatment facilities. Dry weather wastewater flows from the City of Camden and Gloucester City are conveyed to the CCMUAA Delaware Number One Water Pollution Control Facility for treatment. During wet weather events, when the conveyance capacity of the collection system and/or the wastewater treatment facility is exceeded, excess combined sewage flows past through CSO outfalls. In the City of Camden, there are 23 CSO outfalls. One outfall is owned and operated by CCMUAA and discharges combined sewage into Zone Three of the Delaware River. The City of Camden owns and operates 22 CSO outfalls that discharge combined sewage to Zone Three of the Delaware River, the Cooper River, and Newton Creek. Gloucester City owns and operates seven CSO outfalls that discharge combined sewage to Zone Three of the Delaware River and Newton Creek. To comply with federal and state CSO regulations, the City of Camden, Gloucester City, and CCMUAA have committed to meet the requirements of the presumption approach, which requires elimination or capture of a minimum of 85% of the annual average combined sewage collected in the system during wet weather. As part of achieving this, the City of Camden will complete inspection and cleaning of 100% of its collection system by October 31, 2024, while Gloucester City will complete outfall cleaning by the end of 2025. As a result of these activities, new system flow monitoring will be conducted. Additional design details of future CSO control measures will be forthcoming as a result of updated flow monitoring. LTCP projects proposed to be required by these permits include designing and implementing the separation of combined sewer neighborhoods in Pensauken, as well as other improvements that will reduce street flooding in the neighboring Kramer Hill section of Camden. As per the long-term control plan and proposed NIGPTES permit requirements, these projects and others are projected to be completed over multiple NIGPTES permit cycles. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Iris Hernandez. After that, we will return to Joe Manick and begin taking testimony.
Hola, mi nombre es Bennett Moss de la Oficina de Permisos de Agua de Superficie y Pretatratamiento. Les quiero compartir algo de información de fondo sobre el tema de la audiencia de hoy, la renovación de los permisos de NGPDS para el permiso número NG0026182 de la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden. La Ciudad de Camden, número de permiso NG0108812, y la Ciudad de Gloucester, número de permiso NG0108847, donde se emitieron los permisos preliminares del 9 de noviembre de 2023. Todos los permisos están publicados en el sitio web de CSO de la División de Calidad de Agua del NGDEP. El periodo de comentario terminará el 22 de enero de 2024 a las 11:59 PM, de acuerdo con los artículos 7:14A a 15.10 y 15.14 del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey. Los permisos individuales de superficie de NGPDS para los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado de la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester están hidrallicamente conectados a Delaware N° 1, instalación de control de la contaminación del agua de la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden, abribado como CCMUAA. Los desbordamientos de alcantarillado combinado, o CSO, son descargadas de sistemas de alcantarillado combinado. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado son alcantarillas que se diseñaron hace décadas para recolectar el agua de lluvia y de cielo, aguas residuales domésticas y aguas residuales industriales en la misma tubería. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado todavía están presentes en algunas ciudades más antiguas del estado. CCMUAA posee y opera una planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales llamada Delaware N° 1, instalación de control de la contaminación del agua. La instalación trata las aguas residuales recolectadas en una área de servicio de 226 millas cuadradas en Nueva Jersey, que incluye la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester como comunidades de clientes. CCMUAA también posee y operan en un emisario de CSO localizada en la Ciudad de Camden. CCMUAA, la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester poseen partes separadas de un sistema de alcantarillado combinado conectado hidrallicamente. Ni la Ciudad de Camden o la Ciudad de Gloucester posean ni operan ninguna instalación de tratamiento de aguas residuales. Los flujos de aguas residuales durante tiempo seco de la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester se transportan a la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales Delaware N° 1 de CCMUAA. Cuando se excede la capacidad de transporte del sistema de recolección y/o la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales, el exceso de aguas residuales combinada pasa a través de los emisarios de lo OSC. En la Ciudad de Camden hay 23 emisarios de CSO. Un emisario es poseado y operado por CCMUAA, y descargan aguas residuales combinada a la Zona 3 del río Delaware. A la Ciudad de Camden posee y operan 22 emisarios de CSO que descargan aguas residuales combinada en la Zona 3 del río Delaware, el río Cooper, y el arroyo Newton. La Ciudad de Gloucester posee y opera siete emisarios de CSO que descargan aguas residuales combinada en la Zona 3 del río del Delaware y arroyo Newton. Para cumplir con las regulaciones estables y federales de CSO, la Ciudad de Camden, la Ciudad de Gloucester, y la CCMUAA se han comprometido a cumplir con los requisitos del enfoque de presidición de que sigue la emisión a la captación de una mínimo de 85% del promedio anual de aguas residuales combinada recolectada en el sistema durante clima humado, húmedo, perdón. Como parte de lograr esto, la Ciudad de Camden completará la inspección y limpieza de 100% de su sistema de recolección antes del 31 de octubre del 2024, mientras que la Ciudad de Gloucester completará la limpieza de los emisarios para el final del 2025. Como resultado de esta actividad, en nuevo sistema se realizará un monitoreo de flujo. Próximamente se publicarán detalles de diseños adicionales de futuras medidas del control de CSO, como resultado del monitorio de flujo actualizado. Los proyectos LTCP propuestos que serán requeridos por este permiso incluye el diseño e implementación de la separación de alcantarillado combinado en Bensendario en Pensauken, así como otras mejores mejoras que reducirán las inundaciones de las calles en la sección vecina Kramer's Hill de Camden. Según el plan de control a largo plazo y los requisitos propuestos de los permisos del NGPDS, se prevé financiaran estos proyectos y otros, entre varios ciclos de permiso de NGPDS. Esta información, esta misma información se acaba de leer, ahora sería leída en español por Iris Hernandez. Después, volveremos con Joe Manick y empezaremos a tomar testimonio. Gracias, ahora empezaremos a recibir testimonio.
All right, thank you. We are ready to begin taking testimony. And I see we have Jim Cummings from Urban Promise. You can go first, and thank you for adding your email address.
Thank you. Do you hear me, first of all?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue. And also, I want to thank the folks at the CCMUAA, Scott and the leadership. For many years, they have been really friends of the work that my organization does on the urban waters and in Camden. It's been about 15 years since we discovered just the joy of going out on the tidal Cooper River into the back channel, the wildlife, the eagles, the egrets, the great blue herons, the shad that are migrating. All of this, obviously, these waters are cleaner than they've been in 50 years. But as you know, there's a problem, and that's combined sewer outflows. I submitted a comment by email, so I won't really go into that. But what I want to say is the cost is an issue that really does concern me and how that's to be distributed. The CCMUAA is a shared asset for all of the rate payers of the... The C C, the C C M U A is a shared asset for all of the ratepayers of the system. And as a shared asset, there's both advantages and there's cost involved. And without a doubt in my mind, the cost as to helping to mitigate, eliminate the impact of the combined sewer outflows should be shared by every rate player, rate payer of the system. And I know that's been a question as to how that's going to be done. And the other thing I just want to mention is I think there's been billions of dollars spent to bring us onto and near the water in the back channel, the tidal Cooper River. I have no idea what it's costing Sitgo Oil to remediate Petty's Island to make it a nature preserve. I know the remediation of the Harrison Avenue landfill there at the back channel was probably, I think you could figure over a hundred million dollars. The park that was built, the beautiful park by New Jersey D E P, the Kramer Hill Waterfront Park, with a kayak ramp that allows me to bring my boats right onto the water. So I do find there's like some conflict here in just the timing. We're doing so much, investing so much to bring people out onto these waters. And yet, the timeline to deal with the contaminants seems that there's a struggle there in my head as to why that's not being really, really rushed to keep up with all of the work that's been done to bring us out onto the water. I started a wooden boat building program in Camden, Urban Boat Works. We build canoes, we build kayaks with our students that live in the city. In the summer, we hire students at river guides that give guided tours on the tidal Cooper into the back channel. So please, timeline, do this as quick as you can. I don't understand all the engineering. I know it's involved. I know it can't happen overnight. But I just really plead that we do everything we can to do this work and do it quickly, efficiently, thoroughly. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. Next up, I see Suzanne Atman. Go right ahead.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I want to thank all of the staff at the N J D P for getting us here to this important point and of course for valuing health and ecosystems in New Jersey's urban communities. So thank you. Also, just a quick thank you to all the permit holders and their consultants for developing these plans. And thank you to C C M U A for meeting with us recently and shedding some light on many points. So I'm just going to make a few points. As I just mentioned, we, so we commend the city of Camden and C C M U A for collaborating to ensure that their combined sewer system is cleaned. In an update from C C M U A, we were happy to hear that this work will likely be completed within the next year. And unfortunately, the need for a complete system cleaning extends C C M U's, C C M U A's estimated timeline for completion to fifteen years. However, with the system cleaned, the timeline can be shortened to, by five to ten years. From discussions with stakeholders and after looking at the two thousand and twenty three Gloucester City inspection report that was prepared by D and B Guarino Engineers, the most significant construction timeline bottleneck is the cleaning of the regulators and outfalls in Gloucester City. So we're urging the D P to work with Gloucester City and all of the parties there to see how you can accelerate the timeline for the cleaning of the system there in Gloucester City. That will then enable C C M U A and other parties to then accelerate the design and planning of the rest of the solutions that would then shorten the timeline. My understanding is that Gloucester City hasn't responded to some of the outreach. So if there's anything N J D P can do to, again, work with Gloucester City so that they can all come together and develop a collaborative plan. In the example of Camden City, Camden City, all of the C C M U A ratepayers, including Camden City, pay for the sewer lines and pumping stations that convey the sewage into Camden. So we recommend the same approach for Gloucester City's combined sewer system. Reducing the cost per ratepayer and spreading it out over a population that has a much higher medium household income allows for the project to be completed much more quickly under the EPA's affordability guidelines. And if C C M U A could perhaps be, I'm not sure of the exact technical term, but if they could be a fiscal sponsor or a collaborator when Gloucester City applies for funding, that could really make it easier for everyone and create a more equitable allocation of cost of projects in a manner that is permitted in the C C M U A service agreement. And we know that there is quite a bit of technical assistance that Gloucester City can leverage and of course, this once in a lifetime federal funding. So again, we think if all the right parties come together to support Gloucester City in this effort, we could shorten the time or they could shorten the timeline by five to ten years, which means, right? Five to ten years less pollution into the rivers, into streets, into people's homes. Just a quick note on public engagement. So of course, thank you again for finalizing the C S O Public Engagement Guidance Document on the various ways permit holders can successfully engage the public while planning, implementing their plans. In the near term, if you, if N J D P, D E P could please encourage permit holders to start that public engagement process as soon as the permits are finalized, starting with public notifications about the permit and establishment of the C S O supplemental teams. I think, I still think there isn't much clarity in these municipalities among the permit holders as to when that process starts or what they're required to do, when public engagement needs to kick off. So any, any help N J D P can provide in that, in that matter. And just similarly have said this, shared this before, but given that important decisions will be made on these C S O supplemental teams, we do remain concerned the public may be underrepresented on those teams since there's no specific requirement for how many community members should participate nor who they should represent. So we highly encourage, again, N J D P to require, if possible, that a certain percentage of supplemental teams consist of community representatives and at least one representative is from a flood-impacted neighborhood or flood-impacted home, so they can represent others and their voice can be heard. The only other point I'll make tonight, and we're going to be submitting, or we actually did submit more detailed comments, is just regarding green infrastructure. Again, we commend C C M U A for the green infrastructure projects they've incorporated into Camden City. I know that it really is a role model for other municipalities and permit holders. It does not seem that meaningful G I projects are being considered in Gloucester City. So again, if we can encourage the permit holder to reevaluate opportunities to include green infrastructure there and benefit just as Camden City will be benefiting, that would be wonderful. Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments. And next up, I have Kevin Barfield. Thank you for including your email address and your full name. So please go right ahead. Kevin Barfield, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. All right, Kevin, if you don't want to provide any comments and you just want a copy of the final decision, just note that, if you could, put that in the chat. Oh, okay. I see that you're having a problem with your mic connecting. We will give you a few minutes. Well, we'll just, I don't see any other names listed. There's no one who can go ahead of you. So we'll give you a few minutes to try and get your microphone working.
Hey, excuse me, I'm having trouble saying I want to participate in the chat. Can I comment during this time?
Sure, sure, sure. If you would, please just give us your first and last name, organization, and your email address. And you can go right ahead, and that will give Kevin Barfield additional time to get his, to get ready.
Cool. Thank you so much. Sorry about the weird technical thing I'm dealing with. So my name is Lucia Osborne. That's L U C I A O S B O R N E. And I work for the American Literal Society and my email address is Lucia, L U C I A at literal, L I T T O R A L society.org. And my comments are brief. You know, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you to the permittees for their hard work in putting together these permits. And you know, you can really see, especially the C C M U A is, you know, working hard to improve the conditions in Camden. And we really appreciate that. I am not an engineer and so I can't pretend to understand the complexities of what they're doing and wanting to recognize that, you know, there are certain things that need to be done, specifically the cleaning of the pipes and specifically that, you know, that needs to be done both in Camden and in Camden and in Gloucester. With that said, and I know, you know, there are bottlenecks that are happening and I appreciate the need for them to be thorough and wanting to be really effective in their work and engineering. But I just don't want to lose sight of how urgent these issues are and how important it is to protect water quality in the river, to prevent, you know, people's basements from flooding and to really consider the health and safety of the residents in Camden and how that is affected by combined sewer or flow systems. So just wherever it is reasonably possible to please, you know, do everything we can to accelerate this work, whether that means taking a staggered approach, working with the pipes that have already been cleaned or using existing models to do some preliminary designs while they're waiting to get to that monitoring phase. Anything they can do to, you know, get us from fifteen to maybe ten, maybe even five years, I just think is super important. And the other thing I just want to point out is climate resiliency. We are expected to see an increase in precipitation as a result of climate change and wanting to make sure that we're prepared for that and thinking about that as we make upgrades to our systems. And that's all I have, so thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. And if you were the person who raised your hand, if you could please unraise it.
Oh, sorry.
No problem, no problem. I just don't want to miss anyone. All right, Kevin Barfield, if you can, Susan has kindly put in the call in number. If you can use your cell phone, there is a conference ID there. If your computer isn't working out, we'll give you a few more minutes.
Hello?
I heard something very quick.
Hello?
Yep, I heard you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, you're clear. Go right ahead and you can provide your testimony.
Yes. Okay, well, again, I want to, my name's Kevin Barfield. I've been a resident of Camden for fifty eight years. And, you know, first again, thanking, you know, the D E P for this opportunity. Definitely thank you C C U M for actually meeting with us to give us more of a better insight to the particular barriers that is kind of impeding this project. My comment and concern is also about cost and the timeline because of the flooding problem, an issue that we are having in Camden. And even when it comes to the cost, you know, because of the fact that we have, you know, multiple municipalities, we know that there's a lot that's contributing to the overflow problem and just the basic infrastructure and even the added redevelopment. That I'm hoping that they find, you know, another way to help finance this project and then not be a burden on Camden residents. You know, we see that even when it comes to this long range, you know, plan, all this long term control plan, that, you know, some of the communities or my community in particular that's benefited from it is not, will not be in the decree. And somewhere along the line, you know, funding has been found for them, you know, grant funding on a state level has been, you know, found for them to have, be able to have their lives separated into Camden. I don't know what the situation is in Gloucester, but you know, I'm hoping that the D E P can help them, you know, fast track, you know, that process because as long as that, you know, they're, they don't get their overflows clean, then that's going to delay the project for everyone. And, you know, I know that, you know, sometimes people are looking for other means to finance these projects, but I'm hoping that's not another situation where funding is found for Gloucester City, but not, you know, Camden. So again, my concern is the cost along with the timeline and finding somewhere that we can, you know, relieve some of this flooding within the city and residents and their housing. And then also, again, when it was talked about the public representation, there definitely needs to be public, you know, representation at the table when these supplemental teams are actually, you know, in place. So, you know, that's what I have to say when it comes to this particular project. You know, again, thank you guys for all the work you've done. I see that, you know, especially when it comes to this particular situation, it's, you know, it didn't happen overnight. So, and I know that there's something that's, you know, that you need strategic planning and resources is, you know, is paramount. So, but again, I'm concerned that a lot of the ills of the surrounding municipality always seem to fall on Camden residents, which we know. always seem to fall on Camden residents, which we know statistically is, basically has a high level of poverty and the residents just, you know, can't take on that particular task. So that's what I wanted to say in reference to, you know, this situation. That's it.
All right, thank you for your comments. I appreciate that you were able to get in and get your comments. I don't see anyone else in the chat who wants to speak at this time. So what I'll do is I will put us on hold for five minutes. And at 6:59, I will check back in. And if no one has any comments at that point, we'll close the hearing. But if someone wants to comment in the next minute, we'll accommodate you. So we'll take a quick break. Just be on hold. Thank you. All right, everyone, it's been five minutes. No one else has entered their name in the chat to provide testimony. So if there are, this is the last call. If anyone else wants to speak, please put your name in quickly. If not, I think we'll close the hearing for the evening. We'll just give it a couple of seconds. All right, it looks like we're done. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Oh, and just, I would like to just remind everyone the public comment period ends tonight at 11:59 PM. So thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.